Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Went. I'm the chairman of the board. I am going to call the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals of Monroe to order. Again, my name is Jim Went. I'm the chairman. I will let the other members present identify themselves to the record.
Ben Maeney, board member.
Ron Stelmac, board member.
Christina McPhail, board member.
Sarah Harris, board member.
Okay, and joining us as well, we have our zoning administrator, Mr. Schultz. Rick, do you, do we need to, can you read the notice of public hearing, or can we dispense with that?
Yeah, well, the first one is a continuation. Also, in attendance, Mr. Chairman Sarah Stroud, recording secretary, and we have Barbara Schellenberg, special land use counsel.
Thank you.
The first item is a continuation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, first item is three-five-seven Wheeler Road file fourteen-seventeen application of proposed variance section three-point-one-point-six to permit a sixteen-foot side yard setback from twenty-five feet for sixteen-by-twenty-foot addition. This was continued from the last meeting. I am familiar with with the plans. And as I understand it, there was a question about neighbor notification or neighbor contact or something like that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have three new exhibits to read into the record.
Please, please do.
Okay, exhibit number two, certified mail receipts, number three, letter from the neighbor, and I'll read it, Mr. Chairman, to whom it may concern. We, Marie and Kenneth Blake, property owners of three-five-nine Wheeler Road, are writing this letter to address any concerns the ZBA might have regarding our neighbors, ZBA application, who reside at three-five-seven Wheeler Road. It is with great pleasure that we express our willingness to grant permission for sixteen-foot side yard setback instead of the mandated twenty-five-foot setback for the proposed addition to the house. We are fully supportive of their plans and sincerely encourage the approval of this variance. Sincerely, Marie and Kenneth Blake. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Does the applicant have anything else to offer that wasn't discussed at the last meeting?
I don't. Just that my hardship letter was in play and that we needed that letter. My neighbors were on vacation at that time. I wasn't able to get it, and they were just came back, so I was able to get it for this meeting. So I do appreciate everybody's help with that, and I don't have anything other, anything to add other than what I said last time, unless you guys have any questions for me.
No, my only question is, what is the correct pronunciation of your last name?
It's Rama Yet. The L H is like a Y. It's Portuguese. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ramalit.
Thank you.
Do any other, do any board members have any question on this matter? I'm kind of caught up from where things were left off last time, but I understand that was the kind of the missing piece that folks were looking for. If anybody else, if anybody has any questions, please raise your hand so I can call you. I think one of the things we need to remember is since we're not in person, I need to try to identify who the speakers are for the record, so if you could raise your hand and then I can recognize you and announce you to ask any questions. So any board members have any questions at this point? I'm seeing shaking heads. No, I have no further questions. Just the sake of the record, is there anybody present on this meeting that wishes to be heard on this matter? You can unmute yourself and let us know. Going once, going twice. I see no other interested parties, so we will close this file number fourteen-sixteen. Thank you, sir. We were, we're gonna go out of order here because the second item on this agenda is gonna probably take a little bit longer than the last item, so we're gonna skip to file number fourteen-eighteen for Sherwood Place. This is an application for proposed variance of section three-point-one-point-five-A to permit a thirty-six-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required minimum fifty feet for an addition. Is the applicant or their representative here to present this matter?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have to call the hearing in a couple exhibits, and then the applicant can proceed.
Okay.
Zoning Board of Appeals Special Meeting Notice of Public Hearing, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute eight-seven-D, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July eighteenth, at seven P M or soon thereafter via fully remote Zoom meeting concerning the following ZBA twenty-twenty-three dash oh-five file fourteen-eighteen for Sherwood Place, application for proposed variance of section three-point-one-point-five-A as an apple to permit a thirty-six-foot yard setback in lieu of the required minimum of fifty feet for an addition located at four Sherwood Place. Kristen and Corey Edmunds owner, Joe Dalco representative. And, Mr. Chairman, I have three exhibits, application plan set, two certified mail receipts, three letter from the neighbor, which I'll read, proposed addition at four Sherwood Place. I have reviewed the proposed plans for an addition of four Sherwood Place. I have no objections to these proposed plan. Barry Cook and James Vig. That is all, Mr. Chairman. Applicants present.
Sorry, I was muted. Mr. Delco, are you here to present this matter?
Yes.
Yes. Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, so we want it, we're putting a family room, one bedroom, and a mudroom addition. Still, we're still within the the coverage. Our coverage will go from the we'll go from, existing is nine-point-six, we're going to fourteen percent, and we can cover the fifteen, I believe the regulations are. So the only variance we need is the house now is thirty, thirty-one-seven is the exact, I think. And we want to bring the mudroom on the side there. We want to bring that. It'll be thirty-six, so we're actually setting it back three feet. So it's gonna be, there's no attic. It's just gonna be, they're, 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 the, the the owner of the home is my daughter and her husband. And they have two children. One will be going to Stephanie Elementary, Stephanie Elementary next year, but they're just running, it's a small, small split, so they're running out of space. So my son's a builder, Fairfield-Westport area, Paul Dalco Builders. He's gonna build it. And my wife wants me to do this addition. For my daughter. So, and I happen to be in the business, so I guess I'm doing.
Okay, Jim Went, for the, for the record, I'm looking at the survey map and it just, it looks like the vast majority of the footprint of this addition complies with the required setback. It's just the piece in the front, which is that mudroom entry that's the projecting beyond the setback line. Is that correct?
Correct. But the existing house goes further, is further towards the road, so we're setting it back a little, but it's still within that fifty feet. Yeah.
Right, and, and it looks to me that the biggest issue here is, this is a one-acre zone, and this is just a hair above a half an acre, so this lot has a challenge to comply with the setbacks at half the size that it's supposed to be.
Correct.
Okay, I, I don't have anything else. Any board member wish to have a question or have any questions or comments?
I sat down and discussed it with both neighbors. Neither of them have any problem.
Yeah, I'd been on, took a look at the street. It doesn't look like, in my view, that it would be out of character with anything that's, that's out there presently. I don't see any hands of any, oh, Ron, you're go ahead, Mr. Stelmac. You're on mute, Ron.
Is that better? Okay, I did visit the property. It would be consistent with the neighborhood. Clearly, the house was there before the regulations went into effect, making it non-conforming. So, and the lot is very narrow, as you indicated. This appears to be a situation where the regulations created the hardship, and I would be inclined to permit the variance.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, we'll open it up for public comment. If any, if there's anybody present at this meeting that wishes to be heard, please unmute yourself and let yourself be known, and now is your opportunity. Seeing or hearing no one, Mr. Delco, any closing comments? Are you good?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, we will close this hearing, file fourteen-eighteen. Given that the next matter is, is, I don't know that it's gonna be super lengthy, but, but somewhat complicated, perhaps we could go out of order. I would, I would suggest maybe we deliberate and discuss these two matters to let these applicants not have to wait behind the next matter that's pending before us, so without objection. If there's no objection to that, I would ask for us to now be seated in our deliberative process and hear any comment or motion on file fourteen-sixteen, three-five-seven Wheeler Road. Does anybody wish to make a motion on this matter?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve based on property three-forty-seven, which is the adjacent property, has a, a variance as well, and that three-fifty-seven is a similar variance, and it's and the neighbor is provided a recommendation for it and doesn't have a problem for it. And it's, you know, similar to the rest of the property. So I would, I will make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Mr. Maeney. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McPhail. Any, any comment?
I just, it doesn't seem with the property as it is, it doesn't seem to be out of, you know, what's in the neighborhood already consistent to what, you know, the neighbors and the neighbors seem to be okay with that. You know, I think it's not, it's not gonna look terrible. It's fine.
Okay. Jim Went, for the record, I agree with the comments previously made, and I'm prepared to support this application myself. Any other member have a comment before we call for vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye or raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I see five yeses. The matter is approved five to zero. Moving over to file fourteen-eighteen for Sherwood Place, the matter we just heard, does anybody wish to make a motion on this application?
I moved that the variance be granted and approved.
Motion made by Mr. Stelmac. Anybody, is there a second to that motion?
I will second it, Ben.
Seconded by Mr. Maeney. Any other comments or discussion beyond what we've already heard? I agree with the comments I've heard thus far and am also prepared to support this application. Anybody else? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve, say aye or raise your hand. Aye? I see five votes. That is also approved five to zero, so.
Thank you.
Released from captivity and we can
Okay, well, I'd love to stay for the next item, but
Oh, feel free. It's a public meeting. It's, it could be the best free theater in America, so you're, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you very, very much. I'll sign off. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Also, I'd like to say thank you to everybody, to the committee. I'm also gonna sign off. Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
You got it.
Mr. Schultz, do you need to read the call for file number fourteen-seventeen?
Zoning Board of Appeals Special Meeting Notice of Public Hearing, July eighteenth, in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes eight-seven-D, public hearing will be held Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M or soon thereafter concerning the following ZBA twenty-twenty-three oh-four file fourteen-seventeen, sixty-four Cambridge Drive and four Independence Drive, application for proposed variance of section six-point four-point-nine-C, D-E-M-P, conditions of excavation and or filling or grading operation to allow the Inland Wetlands Commission Order of Restoration to be implemented at sixty-four Cambridge Drive and four Independence Drive, Astro Land Holdings LLC and Spacely Land Holdings LLC owners, Solly Engineering LLC representative. And we have exhibit number one, application set and plan two, reports, photos from Attorney Joel Green. And number three, certified mail receipts. And, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Joel Green's exhibits were distributed electronically to the members.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Finn, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. May I begin?
Please, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the, of the board and Chairman Went. For the record, my name is Steve Finn. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Wosse, Rosen, Questkin, Kuriansky in Stanford. I'm here representing the applicants, the owners of sixty-four Cambridge Drive and four Independence Drive. With me here to present initially is civil engineer Kevin Solly. We're gonna proceed with me giving you some history and, and then Kevin giving you the actual details of, of the variances we are seeking here tonight. Let me begin by saying that the history is important here, and will demonstrate why the variances we've requested are, are critical, not only for this project, but we believe for the safety and the environment of the town of Monroe. The facts that I think are germane are not insignificant, and I'm gonna try to go through them as efficiently and expeditiously as possible. My client brought the subject properties in or, in or about May of two thousand nineteen. For ease of reference, I'm gonna just refer to them as the owner or the property. There are two properties here. There are two owners, but I think it'll be easier just use the singular here. Prior to my client's purchase of the property, it had been substantially overexcavated, resulting in significant damage to wetlands and vernal pools located on the property. In November of two thousand nineteen, six months after my client had brought the property, the inland wetlands agent for the town of Monroe issued a notice of violation, which I'll refer to as an NOV, a notice of violation to my client, which required my clients to appear at a hearing before, or a meeting, pardon me, a meeting before the Inland Wetlands Commission to discuss the notice of violation. The NOV also made reference to the fact that if my client failed to appear and didn't seek to remedy these violations that were not caused by him, but were caused by a prior owner, that he would be subject, or they would be subject to fines, enforcement actions in court, and perhaps other punitive measures. The NOV listed numerous violations that had existed on the properties for a long time before my clients had purchased the property, and that included damage to wetlands and vernal pools. Right from the get-go, from right from the issuance of the NOV, my clients quickly and readily agreed to address the issues raised in the NOV. After discussions with the full inland wetlands commission, it was determined that my client should develop a remediation plan for the property in order to restore the wetlands and vernal pools, and that they should file a site remediation restoration application with the IWC. Now, I should also point out that in addition to the damage to the wetlands and vernal pools, you all may know, just by your own experience, that there was a huge hole in this property. It had been basically operated as a quarry for a number of years and had been overexcavated down to bedrock and, and perhaps in certain instances to groundwater. Huge hole. On September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, the IWC, after many hearings, approved the site restoration plan and the resolution of the NOV. The approved IWC plan requires significant excavation and filling operations in order to restore the property, the watershed and the watershed, and to get water flowing back into the wetlands and vernal pools. That IWC approval is Exhibit A to our application for variance, so if you all want to take a hard look at that, it is part of our application. The plan, the restoration plan and the resolution of the NOV called for restoring grades at or near the property lines in order to create an even surface and sheet flow, and to otherwise remediate violations with regard to excavations close to property lines and street lines. The, the IWC's approval contained a number of relevant conditions. For example, one provided that the owner was required to provide funds for regular inspections by a neutral professional who would develop inspection criteria and monitor this filling operation. Another condition required that all applicable DEEP and Monroe Planning and Zoning permits be obtained before we could start the remediation plan. In addition, since this was a violation, the IWC had a condition that required that the work begin as soon as possible. In fact, within sixty days after this independent expert had been retained, and that all work must be completed within five years. This is, we're talking about filling about four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand cubic yards, and they wanted this project to start and finish as soon as possible. And lastly, the last condition I want to bring to your attention was that a bond in the amount of seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars was required to be posted in connection with this project. It could only be released upon the majority vote of the IWC after work on the restoration plan had been completed. So the next step necessary to begin the actual remediation restoration plan was to apply to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an excavation and fill permit, which was necessary in order to bring in the fill and restore the grades to the extent possible and implement the restoration and remediation plan. On October sixth, twenty twenty-one, shortly after the IWC approved the restoration remediation plan, my client filed an excavation and fill application seeking a permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was required to implement the IWC approval. In other words, the owners could not remediate the property and resolve the NOV and restore the wetlands and vernal pools without first obtaining an excavation and fill permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The plans submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the excavation and fill permit were identical to the remediation plan approved with conditions by the IWC. There were no changes between those two plans. The plan required changes to slopes within fifty feet of the common property line between the two parcels and or the street line, changing of contours within twenty-five feet of property lines, and also required bringing in a significant amount of fill to the properties. There were some on hand, but the total fill was gonna be four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand cubic yards. This was necessary in order to fill the hole, get water running to the wetlands, and provide hydration to the vernal pools. As our application pending before you for the variance makes clear, the existing Monroe zoning regulations prohibit that type of work unless the Planning and Zoning Commission waives particular requirements of the excavation and fill regulations. Under the zoning regulations, the Planning and Zoning Commission has the express permission to waive those regulations with regarding work within a property, close to a property line, slopes close to a property line. They have the Pacific, Pacific power to waive that under a provision number six-point-four-point-twenty-three. And, and in fact, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved all the waivers necessary to implement the remediation restoration plan. They used six-point-four-point-two-three to approve the waivers necessary to do the project. The problem and the reason why we're here is that section six-point-four-point-three that authorizes the waivers was subsequently declared to be illegal or invalid by a superior court judge. And so those waivers that were part of the excavation and fill permit were declared to be invalid. I will get to that in more detail in just a minute. I just want to finish the facts here a little bit. After lengthy hearings at which, again, the neighbors through council opposed the even, the excavation fill permit application, the Planning and Zoning Commission on January twentieth, twenty twenty-two voted to approve the excavation fill permit application and granted each of the waivers requested under that section six-point-four-point-twenty-three. The planning and zoning approval also required periodic inspections and reports, a material acceptance procedure, and also required the seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar bond that was part of the IWC approval. The excavation fill permit is also part of our application. It is Exhibit B to our variance application. Now, this is where it gets a little bit more exciting. The neighbor, through Mr. Green, appealed both the approval of the remediation plan and the resolution of the NOV granted by the IWC, and also appealed the excavation and fill permit approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Superior Court. On April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, a judge of the Superior Court issued a decision denying the neighbor's appeal of the Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission approval of the remediation plan and the resolution of the NOV. So the court left intact that approval by the IWC. However, the court sustained or granted the appeal of the decision on the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission with regard to the excavation and fill permit. What the court held was that that section six-point-four-point-two-three of the Monroe zoning regulations, which allows for the waivers, was illegal because it contained no definite standards and represents an improper exercise of authority by the Planning and Zoning Commission. In rendering the decision, the court specifically held that waivers of zoning regulations can only be granted by a zoning board of appeals through a variance and cannot be granted by waivers granted by a planning and zoning commission. So the court said, look, regardless of, of whether, you know, these regulations should apply or not, you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, can't grant waivers. That can only be done by the equivalent of getting a variance from the ZBA. That, in a nutshell, is why we are here. We need the variances in order to complete the restoration, the remediation restoration plan ordered by the Inland Wetlands Commission because we need the excavation and fill permit. Now, I want to add one more thing, because I, I found this interesting. During the oral argument before the judge, he at one point suggested that the solution here, in fact, was to obtain a variance from the ZBA, seeking, you know, variances rather than the waivers, which are not permissible to be granted by a planning and zoning commission. So, in summary, the, after the judge's decision, the remediation approval of the Inland Wetlands Commission remains in effect, and the time periods for undertaking that work still apply. The owners of the property have done a lot of work in compliance with that approval, and the work performed has been closely monitored by independent engineers and licensed environmental professionals hired by both the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Planning, Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure the work was performed correctly and in compliance with all environmental protocols. Rick Schultz has been receiving the reports from the independent expert, and Rick, I know, I see Mr. Hyples was on. I'm not sure if he's still on. I would ask one or both of you to confirm that, in fact, the work that has been done to date has been done correctly, environmentally, safely, and has proceeded all in good order. And Rick or Bill, comment on that, please.
I'll speak first, Mr. Chairman, Rick Schultz speaking. As Attorney Finn indicated, as Attorney Finn indicated, uh, and Safe Consulting was, uh, uh, at the site, uh, essentially weekly to monitor the, uh, remediation work and has been reported to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetlands Commission that all activity has been performed in accordance with the approved, uh, permits. Uh, and I have also inspected the property on numerous occasions and have also advised the planning and zoning in inland wetlands of the same. Uh, Bill is also present if he wishes to speak.
Yeah, Rick, uh, excuse me, Jim went for the record. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Hypel's presence in, in, in those comments, uh, Mr. Schultz, but uh, in my view, I think that's really more in keeping with the domain of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the inland wetlands commission in terms of whether or not the implementation of that remediation plan is being adhered to. Uh, I appreciate the fact that from your view, uh, that you believe that it is and I, and I think we can leave it at that. I think we are. As I see this, we're here at a very limited scope, uh, to look at the provisions of the regulations that the planning and zoning commission initially waived and the court found that they had no jurisdiction to do so and that jurisdiction lies with us. So I, I want to kind of keep this a pretty narrow focus on the issues, but I appreciate, uh, Mr. Hypel's, uh, presence here, uh, this evening. I, I just have one question uh, before we, uh, go further, Mr. Finn, if you were perhaps Mr. Hypel can answer this question to what? Uh, what percentage, uh, if, if, can anybody on the team basically give us a, uh, an estimate of what percentage of the remediation has been accomplished and the percentage that remains to yet be undertaken?
I would defer to either, uh, to Mr. Sully perhaps on that question if he feels comfortable answering it, uh.
It doesn't have to be an exact number, a, a ballpark is good enough.
Yeah, I would, I, I would, I'll get into that. I, I think part of my presentation will probably answer that. I'd say probably maybe fifty percent of the work has been completed. Um, there's more work still to be done, but, uh, I, in part of my presentation, I have some pictures and it'll better provide clarity in, in, in terms of the, you know, precisely what we're looking for, uh, and what we're requesting relief on.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I'll get out of the way and, uh, let you proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, uh, again, Steve, then, Mr. Chairman Wen. I have a, a few more remarks, uh, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sully. Um, so the variances we seek are from the exact same excavation and fill, uh, uh, regulations that the Planning and Zoning Commission granted waivers for. And Kevin will go over, there are four of them. They're listed in our application, but I, I just want to state for the record that those are the exact same ones that waivers were granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. All right. So now I, I want to, I've given you, I think, a, a pretty good factual background here. I spent, I want to spend a little bit more time on the law of variances, which I know is you're all, uh, the members of the board are probably pretty familiar with, but I, I think this is a you know, a somewhat unusual circumstance that we're, we're dealing with, uh, uh, an order or an approval from an inland wetlands commission requiring work to be done. We're dealing with uh, a, a provision of the zoning regulations that was used to grant the excavation and fill permit that was subsequently declared invalid. So let me just spend a little bit of time on that. Um, just for the record, the, the zoning board of appeals of the town of Monroe are authorized to grant variances under Sections nine point five three and nine point five four of the Monroe zoning regulations. In order to grant a variance, there, there, there are, are two major, uh, requisites. The first is, is that granting of variances in harmony with the general purposes and intent of your zoning regulations. And then considering whether granting the variances in harmony with the intent of your zoning regulations or your zoning scheme, you, a zoning board of appeals is to consider the impact of granting the variance will have on public health, safety, convenience, welfare and property values. Um, let me, let me deal with that requisite first. I think that's, that's an easy one here because granting these variances are certainly in harmony with the general intent and purposes of the zoning regulations because the Planning and Zoning Commission already found that the excavation fill permit should be approved and granted the necessary waivers. It fully reviewed all the planning and zoning actual, uh, uh, aspects. It fully reviewed all the planning and zoning aspects of the excavation fill application, including the request for waivers. And therefore necessarily the planning and zoning commission concluded that the waivers were consistent with the general purpose and intent of the zoning regulations. In addition, the fact that the waivers are expressly authorized by the zoning regulations necessarily means that granting the variances is consistent with the general intent and purpose of the zoning regulations. Because the zoning regulations actually allow for the waivers, so granting the variances is perfectly consistent with that. Um, there also can be no doubt that granting the variances here will provide substantial benefits to the public health, safety and convenience and the conservation of property va- values because it will allow the remediation and restor- restoration environmental damage. Clearly, public health is benefited when we can repair, uh, inland wetlands and vernal pools. Uh, there was a gaping hole here. It's since it's being filled in. There were concerns about the safety of this property before this hill, this hole started to be filled in. And so that's an, an additional reason why public policy supports the granting of these variances in this particular case. Um, now I want to go back to the second requisite, uh, for granting a variance. And this is really twofold. Uh, there are two alternatives here. A, a Z B A can grant a variance if it finds that not granting it will result in exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. So if you find that there'll be exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship, uh, by not granting the variances, you know, you should grant the variance. Alternatively, even if there is no hardship, a zoning board of appeals can grant, should grant variances when granting the variance will reduce or eliminate non-conformities on the property. Now, um, I submit to you that, uh, this application, uh, meets both those ulterior criteria, uh, uh, alternative criteria. Um, exceptional difficulty or hardship exists here because my clients were issued a notice of, notice of violation regarding numerous issues with this property, including numerous instances of environmental damages. They were required to file a site remediation plan and resolve the N O V. Otherwise, they would have been or still could be subject to an enforcement action which could result in enormous fines, fees and other punitive measures under your regulation, under the Monroe inland wetland regulations. In short, my client cannot comply with the remediation plan without either the waivers or the variances. The waivers were granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but subsequently a court ruled the waiver regulation is invalid. So that only leaves the variance option. Without the variance, it is impossible to comply with the remediation plan. That alone constitutes a hardship. And another hardship is also created by your zoning regulations, which in hindsight contained an invalid waiver provision as determined by a court of law. So the exceptional difficulty or hardship also arises out of the existing zoning regulations which contained an invalid waiver provision when applied to these properties. That's a legal hardship because the waiver provision was declared illegal and the only one to, only way to make the excavation and fill permit comply with the law and the regulations is to issue variances. Um, it has always been my client's intent to restore the property. Filling the hole, restoring the environment and making this property usable are clearly in the best interest of the town and residents of Monroe. But we cannot do that without the excavation and fill permit and we do not have a valid excavation and fill permit, uh, presently based on the court's decision. And that's why we need the way of, uh, the variances. Thus, a variance of those regulations which were originally writ, waived by the planning and zoning commission is critical. The problem is that we are also between the proverbial rock and a hard place. If we don't get the variances, we can't comply with the approval or order regarding the notice of violation. Thus, the owner would never be able to cure the notice of violation or restore the property and my client would be forever in legal limbo with respect to this property. That constitutes a third basis to conclude a hardship or an exceptional difficulty exists. For example, my client cannot develop the property because they couldn't comply with the approved plan to resolve a notice of violation. It's impossible or nearly impossible to get zoning and inland wetlands permits if an N O V can, is not satisfied. So the property could not be developed or put to a reasonable use and would be virtually worthless unless we continue, we can remedy the N O V. We need the excavation and fill permit to remedy the N O V and we need the variances to have a viable excavation and fill permit. Um, now, I'm, I'm almost finished, Mr. Chairman. I thank you for your indulgence. I want to spend a few minutes just on the alternative ground for granting a variance and that is the reduction of non-conformities. Uh, that is a totally separate and independent ground for granting the variance request under the case law. If granting the variance makes the property more conforming, then there is no need to demonstrate a hardship or exceptional, uh, exceptional difficulty. Our application for variance makes clear that granting the variances, uh, will result in making the property more conforming. As I mentioned, there's already been some excavation within twenty-five feet of the property's line, within twenty-five or fifty feet of a street line. Um, there are slopes that have been created that, uh, are now non-compliant. And so as Kevin can go into more detail, allowing this, these variances will allow restoration of the property and make it more conforming to your zoning regulations. Um, and lastly, before turning things over to Kevin, I, I want to briefly address the documents that Mr. Green submitted this morning. All those documents were issued before the inland wetlands commission approved the restoration or remediation plan and before the planning and zoning commission issued the excavation and fill permit. Those plans were meant to address and did any violations and cease and desist orders that had been issued. If that were not the case, the I W C and the planning and zoning commission would not have granted those applications. And lastly, there have been no notices of violations or cease and desist orders issued since those two approvals, uh, had, were, were, were issued. Um, thank you, Mr. Wen. I appreciate the time and the indulgence. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, but if you want to hold those, uh, I can turn it over to Kevin right now.
No, I think it would be best to, to hold, let you complete your entirety of your presentation and then we can follow up with any questions.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Steve. Um, for the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. Office is located right here in Monroe at five oh one Main Street. Um, uh, Rick, if you could enable screen sharing, I have a, just a brief presentation with some graphics. So I think I'll help the, the commission or, uh, the, the board, you know, better understand the requests. Um, I think you need to, um, allow me, uh, you may have to either promote me to, uh, um, either promote me or allow participant screen sharing.
Let's try that again.
Perhaps you can select me and make me a, uh.
There we go. Okay. Go ahead, Cap.
Great, thank you. Um, so, uh, so again, just to, to follow up, uh, Steve, thank Steve for going through that. Um, you know, very good comprehensive discussion about some of the legalities of what we're proposing and, and the history behind it. I'm, I'm going to, um, kind of go into some of the more specifics and, and justification as to what we're requesting. So the board, so the board has clear understanding of, of what we're, what we're requesting here. Um, so, um, just to orient everybody. So this site is located on the north end of town, um, off of, to the north of Pepper Street, Route twenty-five runs north-south in this location. And, and the site is comprised of two parcels, sixty-four Cambridge Drive and four Independence Drive. Um, you can see here, this is Pepper Street intersects with the north, with the north end of Main Street here. Access to the site is provided off of Cambridge Drive, um, in this location here. And also throughout the Pepper Street Business Park, if you go down Enterprise Drive, uh, through here and then turn right on Independence, the, the property to the north is for Independence, property to the south is sixty-four Cambridge. Um, this is an aerial that was used during the presentations with planning and zoning, just to kind of show what the condition was, um, the time our client, uh, took possession of the property. Um, so this shows how, you know, to the northern, northern end along Independence, there was a, a, a deep hole that was below groundwater and there were, uh, stockpiles of material throughout the site. Um, again, as Steve, you know, Steve gave the history in terms of the permitting effort. So what part of this effort was, um, you know, we wanted to restore the site and to, to clean up, um, you know, activities that took place on the property before our client took possession. Um, now, uh, this, um, image depicts where the current property line sits. So for Independence, Independence Drive is to the north. This parcel here is for Independence and then the parcel to the south is sixty-four Cambridge with access off of Cambridge. Um, the reason the property line location is important is because a number of the waivers, um, have to do with the fact that we essentially have um, two properties that are acting as one, even though there's a, a, an internal property line between the two parcels. So a number of our relief that we're seeking from a waiver standpoint is because we're simply, you know, we're dealing with the site that, that uh, travels over two pieces. So obviously we have to do grading along that interior line so it can function, um, the way that it needs to. So the four, um, items we're requesting variances for, um, uh, section six point four point nine C, no change in contour shall be made within twenty-five feet of any property line. Section six point four point nine D, no artificial slope greater than fourteen degrees to the horizontal or maximum four feet horizontal to one foot vertical shall be created within fifty feet of any property line. Um, section six point four point nine E, no artificial slope greater than fourteen degrees to the horizontal shall be created within fifty feet of any street line. And six point four nine P, all permitted such activities regardless of permitted location shall not include permit or involve materials from off-site locations. So, um, our proposed grading plan, which was presented to wetlands and planning and zoning and approved by both commissions, you know, it essentially shows where that interior property line sits. What we were proposing is, is in an effort to restore the watershed to this easterly wetland system. We were raising the grade of the site along Independence Drive to allow for sheet flow to, for stormwater to land in this area and then drain over towards the wetland, restoring some of the watershed that previously fed that wetland system before the site was excavated below that elevation. And then simply to grade throughout the interior of the site so that we had positive drainage flow from this edge down to the south. Uh, additionally, we were putting in some water quality basins to deal with stormwater management and to ensure that the stormwater leaving the site, um, uh, you know, was, was treated effectively and provided water quality benefits, which actually ultimately is, is a benefit to the, um, to the property owners that surround us and also the, the overall town in general as all of this stormwater um, reaches the, the west branch of the Paquannic River, um, which flows through town. Um, just to orient everyone and kind of get you got, get you an idea of the, the severity of this. I wanted to show one section that we presented. Um, this essentially is a section running north-south through the property. So to the right is Independence Drive. You can see the existing grade of Independence Drive is considerably higher than the grade that was left. This dash line is the grade of the property prior to our client taking, um, possession and ownership of the property. So you can see how deeply this was excavated. So we were proposing to fill the grade. This darker contour is our proposed grade that was approved by both weapons and planning and zoning. So we were really proposing to fill that up, bring this back up to an elevation consistent with Independence Drive to the north, which would then allow for, um, that stormwater to drain to the wetland. This just zooms in a little bit. You can see again, this is Independence Drive. Here's the property line. We were cleaning up a lot of the grades that were left. You can see how deep this was and what was needed in order to really fix the, 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 the damage that's been done to the property to really restore the property to create something that's far, far improved from what's there or what was there. Damage that's been done to the property to really restore the property to create something that's far far improved from what's there or what was there um before. So again, back to the specific variances, um, number one, six point four nine C, no change in contour shall be made within twenty five feet of any property line. The the areas highlighted in purple show essentially the grades we were proposing. Um, the changes in contour we were proposing within twenty five feet of any property line. And just to kind of zoom in a little bit. Along Independence Drive, there's a municipal stormwater basin in this location here, which. Previous approvals require that there be an access maintained, so the town could actually get to and maintain that basin. Um, as it collects and conveys stormwater from in Enterprise Drive and Independence Drive. The previous property owner constructed a berm. There was no way to get access to it. So we had to do some grading to create that access. So that was some grading within twenty five feet of a property line. Additionally, we were just cleaning up some grades um along Independence Drive in this location here to really create that finished surface that we needed. We were also proposing changes in contour within the the internal property line, because again, we're proposing to. Fix a problem and trying to maintain the existing grades through here would really leave the site in something that is that that doesn't. Uh, address the the violation that was granted that was created by the previous property owner. So we had to grade through that area. Um, and then on the southern end, um, there was, you know, for some, again, grading proposed really to clean up a lot of the area that was previously disturbed. We didn't propose to clear anything or grade anywhere that wasn't previously disturbed. It was really cleaning up some areas in this location here. We have a water quality basin and some wetlands uh which were recreated and replicated as part of the the remediation work. And then along this edge of the property line here, we were simply cleaning up and creating the edge of a a water quality basin. Which again provides water quality improvements to the site. Um, and to provide better protection for downstream property owners and surrounding property owners. The next item that we're requesting variance on uh section six point four point nine D, no artificial slope greater than fourteen degrees to the horizontal. Or maximum four feet horizontal to one vertical shall be created within fifty feet of any property line. Again, it's the it's those same areas, just with a larger buffer. And again, a four to one slope or a um. Really one to four. That's a very shallow. Grade and and what we were dealing with was an area where we had much steeper grades that existed. We had to. Um, clean those areas up and the resulting grade would be steeper than um. One vertical to four horizontal, which again was the need for the relief. Um, for these sections. And again, as as Attorney Finn indicated, this is something that the zoning regulations have empowered the planning board to do. Planning and zoning commission to to grant waivers in the past. They have historically granted these waivers as as. It has been deemed appropriate to do so, but the lead, the recent court decision basically said that the only ones who can grant those waivers is this is this board, which is again why we're here. Um, the third variance we're requesting is section six point four point nine E. No artificial slope greater than fourteen degrees to the horizontal shall be created within fifty feet of any street line. Again, this is really just tied to the grading proposed along Independence Drive, which. Uh, again, was to create an access into the municipal stormwater basin. Which is which is covered under easement, and we need to make sure there's access so it can be maintained. And then again, just to clean up some some grading through here to kind of blend what was there and and create that finished condition. That allows for that positive drainage to that easterly wetland system. And then the last item we're requesting relief on. Um, per section six point four point nine P, all permitted such activities regardless of permitted location shall not include permit or involve materials from offsite locations. Obviously, the the um application before the planning and zoning commission and now um. The uh Zone Board of Appeals was for an excavation and fill permit. In order for us to fill this site, restore those watersheds, restore this property. We have to import material from offsite locations to place that fill. During the planning and zoning process and the wetlands process, there was extensive discussion regarding. What that material would be, how that material would be tested, how it would be insu- in ensured that that material was clean. And I think Commissioner Wen, you did a very good job of saying that's outside of the ZBA's purview, and that was. Properly reviewed and and approved, in our opinion, by the by both the Wetlands Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission. So, um. But yet we still need to. Import material from an offsite location in order to achieve these finished grades and really achieve our our goal of restoring the property. And just to provide a a picture of what the site looks like today, this is actually from, um, this is the south looking towards Independence Drive. You can see that the work that's been done under the permits that were granted has been done. Um, uh, in an expeditious manner, using all best management practices. It is, it has been, uh, it has had oversight from from representatives from our office. From um representatives representing the town, and it has been, you know, established that the work that has been done has been done in a. Uh, of of a very appropriate workmanlike manner. It has provided a a far improvement to achieve the goals. A far improvement from what was there before, and it is well on the way of achieving the goals of restoring this property and and um cleaning up uh what had taken place in the past. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the that the board may have. Uh, or if there's anything else that that Attorney Finn or the rest of our team would want to add to 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 the discussion.
If we can just take the screen share down so I can see um. The board members, um, does that, Mr. Finn, does this conclude your presentation?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, it 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 does. Uh, this is Steve Finn for the record.
Thank you. All right. Before we move on to, I know there's interested parties that wish to be heard. Uh, are there any questions from the board members at this point? Just raise your hand and I will recognize you. Mr. Mayini.
What's the um future plans of both properties?
I I think the intent is is, well, the first, the first thing we had to do was address the violations and and the goal is that potentially the site can be marketed and be used for. Um, you know, commercial purposes. In accordance with the zoning regulations.
Ms. McPhail. You're you're on mute.
So, um, I was saying, I know there's a set time that's provided that these things have to be done. In order to remediate, you have a certain number of years. I think it was five. Um, but is there a projection to when it would be done if the variances are granted? How much longer would the project take to remediate it all? Would it take the full amount of time or would it be less?
Well, the 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 balance.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Sure, the the balance of the work to be completed is is dependent upon sourcing additional material to import. Um, to achieve those finished grades and, you know, the the property owner, the applicant is is actively working on sourcing those materials. Um, the goal is to have it done, you know, before that deadline approaches, but the there's been a commitment to to. Complete it in accordance with the permit requirements. And any modifications to that would have to go back to the planning and zoning commission to. Maybe either modify that approval or pursue new approvals for a potential development plan.
I I should add, just to clarify, the um. The inland wetlands commissioner approval is for five years with the right to seek an extension. And my recollection is that the excavation fill permit. Uh, has a two-year expiration uh period with the right to go back and seek extensions there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members at this point?
Um, just a point of.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Sarah Harris. Um. Variance request description is referencing section three point one point six A. For the eighteen point six foot yard setback. And then in the narrative, we're, I'm seeing uh page two, top of page two, section six point four point nine C. Are both sections, um. Uh, are we requesting a variance for both sections or is is am I missing something here?
I I can answer that. Attention, Wen, for the record, we we took matters out of order here, so we're we're looking at what's the second uh hearing item. Um, not that there, we took the third one first, which was the thirty foot. The the thirty six, so we're looking at the second matter, file fourteen seventeen. Is that? If that doesn't answer your question, I'll let the applicant take a shot at it, but I think.
Sure, sure. So our our narrative, um. And I have to double check. Our narrative just references four provisions that we're seeking variances for. Six point four point nine C, six point four point nine D, six point four point nine E, and six point four point nine P.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Chairman Wen, I I don't want to make one other very brief comment just for the record, and that is, I I should have pointed out that. Uh, if we don't, if we can't get the variances and therefore we don't have an excavation and fill permit, and therefore we can't complete the. Uh, the remediation plan. My client uh will all probability lose his almost three quarter million dollar bond. So I think that I just want to point that out for the record. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. All right, um, you will have an opportunity for the last word, uh, Mr. Finn, based depending on um what we hear. Um, I know, I understand, uh, there's Attorney Green is here representing a neighbor. There may be others. Um, but I will open up for public comment at this point. Um, Mr. Green, if you're prepared, you may uh go go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport. Just one moment. With the lofts of grading gross, it's my pleasure. To appear before you this evening on behalf of Peter Metropolis. Who owns the budding property at one thirty six Timothy Hill Road in his capacity as a trustee. Boy, I don't know where to begin on this. Uh, the applicant told an interesting story, but they left out a lot of good parts. And uh, really. This variance cannot be granted. Because the hardship in this instance was entirely self-created. You have. I mean, uh, let me begin. This was prior to May of two thousand nineteen, as the applicant represented a heavily, heavily overexcavated site. It was overexcavated um by New England Materials, the principal of which was uh John Kimball. By hundreds of thousands of cubic yards. In May of two thousand nineteen, Spacely and Astro, uh, the applicants. Acquired these properties. Their principal is Arnold Karp, who I see is here tonight, and Mr. Stone, who's also here tonight. They are sophisticated uh real estate investors and developers. And they saw an opportunity with this crater of a site. And I mean a crater. And uh. Basically, they developed a business model where. They set up a scale and a scale was set up at the entrance to the property. And the notion was to buy the property cheaply. To receive fill for which they were paid, and trucks would pull up and get on a scale and based on the weight. They would pay to bring materials. The materials would be used to fill the big hole on the site. And ultimately, after the the revenue from receiving all that material and filling the site to sell or develop the property. Uh, for good value. Some of the things, first of all, you have a buyer with knowledge. So Astro and Spacely certainly had knowledge of the condition of the site when they bought it. Uh, I'm going to assume that uh the applicant was in error when they keep referring to the activities by the previous owner. Because the record here is clear that uh Astro and Spacely. Continued the conduct that violates the zoning regulations, conservation regulations, the excavation and fill regulations of the town of Monroe. And as evidence of that, you have uh. Several notices of violation. And as you know, Mr. Schultz is very good at communicating with property owners when there are issues. Denise Halsted, who used to be uh in conservation, was also very good at communicating with property owners. And it got to the point where they had to issue um violations. And I've submitted the violation background report, and this is October of two thousand nineteen, some five months after Mr. Karp. Uh, or Astro and Spacely acquired the property, and it's noted, for example, on page two. The property owner continues to utilize the property for unpermitted activity. Currently, Phil is being placed within the hole from offsite. Um. It's been pointed out that uh, so there's, and I won't go through it because you have the document before you. Some five months after they acquired it then. Um, the inland wetlands are already. All over this and issuing this violation background report. Did that end it? No. In June of two thousand twenty four, Joe Chapman, your zoning enforcement officer, sent a cease and desist order. This is more than a year after the applicant acquired the property and uh, um, the violations. On the cease and desist, and it says cease and desist effective immediately. So that's June twenty four, two thousand twenty. So obviously, thirteen months after the property was acquired by these owners, the property continued. You then have. A uh. July twenty third, two thousand twenty, fourteen months after, there's a citation for z- of zoning violation. So there is no question that the activity was continuing and that this owner was complicit. In the activity uh that was being complained of. Uh, I also, interestingly, this applicant was selling material off the site. You have a price list, for example, from as late as revised April of two thousand twenty. So this applicant kept operating the site. Until the town basically took legal action to stop the activity. So that's out there. So you have a notice of violation and proceedings begin before inland wetlands. Critical to this is this whole plan. Was not proposed by inland wetlands. This remedial plan was designed by these applicants. And as part and parcel of this plan, it wasn't just to restore the site back to its original condition. But this plan restores the site in a manner that makes it developable. And interestingly, when uh Mr. Solley had those plans up, you notice it creates two perfectly level areas on the site. Which are developable as building pads. So this is about economic gain. It's about economic development. It's not about uh. Directly um addressing the violations only. So again, self-created hardship. Uh, the remedial plan was approved uh and an excavation and fill permit was granted. Now, I pointed out repeatedly during these proceedings that these waivers could not be granted. And I'm sure that many of you, I know, Mr. Wen, you're familiar with the McKenzie case in Monroe. Which deals with this specific uh issue of uniformity. And zoning commissions cannot issue waivers. Zoning commissions can adopt regulations. And zoning commissions uh. There's there's a uniformity requirement. So your zoning regulations cannot have like waiver provisions. Everyone has to be held to the same standard. And you can't address um cases uh properties on a case by case basis. And that was the basis, and I pointed it out repeatedly during the zoning proceeding. But uh, the excavation and fill permit pursuant to the plan that was again submitted by this applicant. This designed by this applicant, this applicant who bought this site in this condition for its economic benefit. That plan is what was uh. Ultimately approved by the uh Planning and Zoning Commission. We took an appeal and uh Judge Radcliffe. Issued uh two decisions. One was in the inland wetlands uh on the remedial plan, and it was our position in that appeal. That the remedial plan among our claims was it went beyond just site remediation. And that there were aspects of the remediation that were violative of the um inland wetland regulations. And then we made several claims in the uh. Zoning appeal, and the court again found that these waivers could not be achieved. Now let's be clear about one thing. And the applicant, uh, I'm sure was mistaken in the way they characterized it. Judge Radcliffe never suggested in his opinion or in his remarks that this board should grant these variants. that this board should grant these variances. He did not say that. Let's not, there should be no mistake about that. What he said was that only this board may grant variances under section eight dash six of the Connecticut general statutes. And I know you're familiar with the standards for granting variances, but again, he didn't say you should, he said you can. So we've got to be very clear about that. Ironically, to go further on the self-created uh aspect of this present situation, when these plans were approved by the Conservation Commission, or inland wetlands, rather, I'm sorry, by inland wetlands, and the excavation and fill permit was approved by the zoning commission, we took timely appeals. What did the applicants do? They started filling as quickly as they could. In the face of these appeals, they started trucking materials in. They didn't wait to see whether, what the outcome of the appeals would be uh so that they wouldn't be in this situation where they have this bond and they've invested all this money and done all these things. Instead, they've trucked in hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of material. And now, they, how can they appear before this board and say, oh, look at this problem we have? We have these slopes, we have these issues, when obviously if the appeals were pending, they could have remained in place, stood still, and even said to inland wetlands, hey, there's an impending appeal, and this has stayed for the moment. But no, they went forward. So any argument about the fact, oh, you know, our site is now half-full, or we have these slopes, or we have these situations, if any of it is attributable to any activities, it is fully, fully self-created by a buyer who bought this site with knowledge for economic opportunity. Just give me a moment. So now uh we have a situation where the site is sitting there uh and they have come to you asking for variances. And I would suggest to you that there is no basis to grant a variance. The buyer, um the applicants have other remedies. Their remedies include going back to the inland wetlands commission and saying, look, we have this situation, and now we have figured out that the remedial plan that we have proposed and that you approved did not pass muster from uh after review by the Superior Court of the excavation and fill permit. So we need to go back to the drawing board on this in a manner that satisfies and complies with the zoning regulations. That's item one. Item two, this applicant has already come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there is a pending application to amend the regulations, to change the standards, to change the standards for excavation fill permits. They have asked to uh amend the regulations, they've proposed a text amendment that would change the regulations uh uh to, I suppose, accommodate their plan. Therefore, they have an adequate remedy at law right now. Uh and those applications are pending, they have not been acted upon by the uh Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is not the place of last resort. This is more a place of convenience for the business purposes of of the applicant. Just give me one moment, I just want to check my notes. So another aspect of this is it creates a dangerous precedent. It has got to be harder to ask for forgiveness than to ask for permission. It's got to be harder. And this applicant is so guilty of this because they have proceeded at every turn in a manner that benefits them. And I would also submit that uh there are issues that are going to be litigated, I can assure you, and are going to be reviewed regarding the nature and extent of the fill in the ground under this project. And while the uh approvals are, you know, the inland wetlands approval is in place, and I understand that, there is a petition for certification pending to the appellate court of the state of Connecticut. And I would submit that that decision is presently vulnerable. But certainly, the applicant has other remedies uh and they include, once again, going back to inland wetlands and redesigning their plan in a manner that complies with the zoning regulations. And I don't think that this board should get into making judgments or accepting opinions on whether it can be done or it can't be done. And I can predict that uh engineers will disagree as to what can be done. But certainly, this commission, this board is not in a position to evaluate whether any other plan is possible or not possible. Once again, the uh text amendment is pending, that may provide an area for relief. And not to be too repetitive, but all of this, all of this situation is the result of a buyer with knowledge who has created a situation and is now coming to this board to ask this board to bail this applicant out. And the law just doesn't support it. Reduction of nonconformities, you have a plan that does not comply with the zoning regulations based on Judge Radcliffe's decision. And uh to, for counsel to suggest that it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development because it complies with the waiver provisions is absurd because the waiver provisions have been struck down by Judge Radcliffe. So um on that basis, I would suggest that uh while this is complicated on some levels based on sort of the the geography and the the science involved uh from a, from the context of the jurisdiction of this commission, this is a relatively straightforward application. And really, this board should uh decline at this time. At this time, this board should decline to issue any variances. Uh and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I certainly want to thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Green. This is Chip Went for the record. I just have one question. Uh do you have an opinion, uh Mr. Green, as to whether the plan as proposed, if implemented, would be more closely compliant to the zoning regulations than the prior conditions of the site?
Well, it depends how far you want to go back. If you go back to two thousand six before, or probably at some point between two thousand six and two thousand nineteen, the site was probably compliant with the zoning regulations. But then it started to be excavated, there was a special permit issued.
Uh I I I'm not to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but I understand the the history of the site, but let's just put it a different way. The condition of the site today versus the condition of the site, if the plan is implemented, would the fully implemented plan be closer to compliance to the regulations than the conditions of the site today? Regardless of who did it or players involved, or who made money or who didn't make money, um today's site conditions versus the finished product site conditions, which is more closely compliant to the regulations, if you have an opinion?
I can't really answer that. I want to say that the present site conditions are more compliant uh meaning, I know what you're getting at, but I would also uh it's complicated because, for example, the applicant has chosen to maintain this as two separate lots, Four Independence and sixty-four Cambridge, for its economic purposes so that it can sell them separately, for example. And then says, oh, we have this lot line in the middle of the site, and we have this, by the way, the lot line was adjusted in the course of these proceedings to establish a better uh sale of a lot at Four Independence. And then says, well, we have these slopes and we have this condition. Uh we have a property line running through the middle of our site, when really the applicant could just merge the properties and that would solve that issue. So I'm not sure. I guess I I'm going long on your question, but your question seems to be, would these variances make it more compliant with the zoning regulations?
Yes.
No. You would issue, you would issue a variance and it wouldn't comply with the zoning regulations, but you would, but you would essentially create a legally existing nonconforming situation, I guess is the correct answer.
Okay. I have no further questions. Um I don't know if there are any other members of the public that wish to speak. Does anybody have a question, Mr. Green, Mr. Stelma?
Yes, uh question for Mr. Green. But if the variances were granted, do you foresee harm to the public or to members of the town? Private members of the town?
I see harm to my client who is concerned about the groundwater quality by virtue of this plan. So you're proceeding with a plan that violates zoning regulations, but more significantly, uh we believe that there's issues with the groundwater at present. So piling more dirt on top of it is not, in our view, going to help that situation.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Mr. McPhail, I'm Mr. McPhail. You're on mute, Christine.
All right, um sort of in the same sphere. This question is to do with, I know one of the benefits that they listed of going through with all the fill and and that was to restore the watershed locations and the the pools. Um so I guess what I'm hearing is that there's concern as to the quality of water because of the quality of fill? Or is there a problem with water as it is now? Or because of the fill that was brought in by present owners?
There were four onsite wetlands, including vernal pools, uh one of which was obliterated, basically. Well, three, two or three of them were destroyed, one of them was completely obliterated. They had been, they, as a preliminary matter, there was a permit granted to pump water into some of these wetlands, which apparently, and I can't speak to this, but the applicant reported, was uh apparently of some benefit. But I think the more appropriate uh situation here would be to send this applicant back to inland wetlands and figure out a way to continue to uh remediate the wetlands, but come up with a plan that is more compliant with the zoning regulations, rather than granting uh s- simply handing waivers to an applicant who's violated the zoning regulations.
Any additional question before? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Christina.
Yeah, I'm fine. Who who wants to go first?
No, you, the floor is yours.
Oh. Uh so there my last question would be, is there concern about the fill covering up a problem with the water as it is right now?
Yes.
There is. Okay, okay, thank you.
So I have a question as well, Sarah Harris. Um in our charge, we're looking at a variance, um taking the first, the first uh variance request of a difference of eighteen point six feet versus the required minimum of of twenty-five feet. I think what would help me, Mr. Green, and and understanding what your what your concerns are for your client, is within this variance, what is the impact if it were twenty-five feet versus eighteen point six feet? How would that differ?
It would comply with the zoning regulations, first of all. Secondly, uh the at present, there are slope um regulations. The commission is presently looking at whether, at the the wisdom of those slope regulations. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is actively reviewing its excavation and filling regulations and determining what it, in its jurisdiction, is just fair and reasonable. And for this board to simply leapfrog the zoning commission under these circumstances and sort of set aside the zoning regulations, I I think is inappropriate in in this context. Meaning, taking advantage of this situation for this board to make judgments about what's safe and what's not safe in terms of the slopes, in terms of the location of the slopes, in the context of an applicant who's violated the zoning regulations and has a non uh zoning compliant plan, it's completely inappropriate. The, you know, we had a long discussion about this last night at uh the Planning and Zoning Commission Subcommittee meeting, and really, and I know as this board knows, the concept of hardship is where uh the zoning regulations enacted basically act to confiscate or make property of no value. And that's simply not happened here. Everything that's happened here is based on the greed of this applicant entirely, and this applicant, and this applicant basically is in the same shoes as the owner before it, and it paid to step into those shoes. So to separate it from someone, they're they're basically complicit, and they're part of this operation that has overexcavated a site by hundreds and hundreds of thousands of cubic yards, thousands of truckloads of material leaving this site.
If I, if I can interrupt him, Mr. Green, I, we we understand the the deal here, that that this site has been overexcavated and there's a plan to remediate it. The question is, should it be remediated? I mean, you seem to be arguing that the hole shouldn't be filled in.
It's not, that's not the, but that's, the whole point is, it's not the jurisdiction of this commission to decide how and whether the hole should be filled in. There's a hardship standard, and there are standards, and it's a legal uh standard. And it's not sort of a matter of evaluating the wisdom of filling the wetlands or restoring the wetlands or what it looks like. The question is whether the jurisdiction of this board is triggered under this set of circumstances, quite simply. And I know the applicant wants to plead the equities. And I get the sense that this board is acting about the equity, asking about of uh, you know, questions going to the equities, but it's not about equities. It's about whether there is a hardship that enables this board to grant variances. With all due respect.
I I
Mr. Mr. Chairman, may I just respond to something that Mr. Green said?
You you may, Attorney Shawburn.
Thank you. Um I I agree that the standard is there needs to be an unusual hardship or uh has been stated, I believe this court is well aware, as an independent ground to grant a variance, if the board finds that there would be a decrease in nonconformity, um that would be another ground. Um but I I do not agree with Mr. Green's characterization uh that in order to find a hardship, this board would need to find that the property would basically be rendered without value. Um I think that was his position, so I just wanted to make that clear. Um I I do tend to agree in terms of the law with uh the way that Mr. Steve presented it, and and I'm sorry, Mr. Finn, presented it uh in terms of uh unusual hardship. Um it is obviously this board's discretion as to uh which way it wants to go on this matter, but I just wanted to clarify uh you know, what I what I believe is is the correct legal analysis to be applied.
Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Mr. Green, you you can respond to that if you would like.
The the case law in Adolphson, which is a Fairfield case, that is basically was one of the pillar cases in establishing reduction of nonconformities, has never been extended to a situation like this.
Well, I think we can all agree that we are in a very unique circumstance uh in the facts of the matter of of this case.
Yeah, I would venture to say that there is not a case out there, certainly. I certainly have not done the research, so I cannot say this, you know, with um, I I cannot confirm that there's no case out there. With facts like this, but I I would tend to think that this is a an unusual situation. And um, obviously the board needs to take into consideration. The unusual facts that do exist in in this case when the board is making its decision.
Are you finished with your presentation, Mr. Green? We were asking you questions, so I presume you are concluded with your presentation?
Yes, thanks again.
Okay, uh, are there any uh beside the applicant will have an opportunity to rebut? Uh, is are there any other members of the public? Present uh on this meeting that wish to be heard on this matter? Uh, seeing and hearing none, I will turn things back over to Mr. Finn for any kind of. A brief wrap up and rebuttal, and then we can move on.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Wen, again for the record, Steve Finn, I uh. I will try to be brief, but there was. A a lot of factual and legal on the statements by Attorney Green that I think need to be addressed. Uh, I do want to point out just a couple of facts here that I think are important. Mr. Green stated that the the property has been sort of in violation since two thousand and six. It's been over excavated starting in two thousand and six. I just want to point out that my client didn't take possession of the property until two thousand and nineteen. And that the notice of violation that brings us here to you today. Was issued six months after my client brought the property, so. Any work that uh my client did that may, and we dispute, may have contributed to any violations. Was at best or at worst the minimus. I also want to address uh Attorney Green's statement about uh polluted groundwater. That has been rejected. Innumerable times. Mr. Metropolis and Mr. Green have reached out to the DEEP making complaints about the environmental problems at this property. The DEEP has been out to the property two or three times and never found anything wrong. With regard to the fill that was placed, that has been monitored by an independent licensed environmental professional. Who has found nothing wrong. Uh, with regard to anything that's been done at this property in accordance with the IWC approval. Um, so I just, you know, credibility is important before you. And I would submit that some of these statements that have been made on behalf of the opposition, Mr. Neighbor, are just not credible. So, uh. With regard to this idea that the IWC didn't design the remediation plan. That is true, but they ordered us. They sat us down and say, discuss with us what you think would be a good remediation plan. And we had a number of hearings or number of meetings before we filed the application to discuss what the remediation plan should be comprised of. And once it was it was designed by us, but that was because the IWC wanted us to design the plan. And then they fully vetted it and they made changes to it and then they approved it. This is the plan they think has the best. Uh, uh, the the is the best plan to remediate the wetlands. The idea that we should go back to them now, that this that the ZVA should somehow, I think Attorney Green says, you should send them back to the IWC. Well, no, 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 no. The IWC is very happy with what's been happening at this property. They're happy with the plan they approved and the way it's been implemented so far. So that again is just uh throwing someone something for you to consider that really is virtually. I- i- improbable and impossible and frankly, a step in the absolute wrong direction. It drives this property back. To being from being remediated to having to come up with a whole new plan. Everyone except Mr. Metropolis is happy with this plan. Now, why he's not happy? Don't know, hasn't, you know, hasn't, you know, we haven't heard anything more complaints from DEEP from Mr. Metrop that Mr. Metropolis has registered with them. I don't, you know, but. Look, he wanted to buy the property. His nose is at a joint because he wanted to buy this property and. Mr. Karp uh threw his LLCs, he's the managing member, he bought the property, so. I think he has uh an axe to grind with regard to this property that has not been uh. His environmental claims have been rejected by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And rejected by the IWC and the idea that the ZVA should give them any credit whatsoever is frankly. Uh, inappropriate and not fair. Um. Uh, look, we couldn't apply for a variance. Until the court declared the waiver provision illegal. That's when the hardship arose. The hardship arose wasn't self-created by us because when we bought the property. We the zoning regulations allowed for this work to be done because the waivers were still valid at that time. So it's not the, this is not a self-created hardship. It was caused by a decision by the Superior Court saying that the waiver provision is invalid. That's a legal hardship. And that is cognizable by a ZVA to grant a variance. So um, the idea that this is a self-created hardship does not apply. Again, the hardship was created when the court. Ruled that the waiver provisions were not allowed. Um. Um. With regard to doing the work during the penancy of the appeals. That that was what the IWC wanted us to do. We were ordered to start the work within sixty days after. The uh independent expert, environmental expert was hired. We were required to start the work. Everyone wanted us to start the work. There was ongoing environmental damage. The wetlands were only going to be damaged further if we didn't start the work. So the idea that we should have voluntarily stopped waiting for a decision from the Superior Court. Made no sense from uh an environmental sensitivity point of view, made no sense from a timetable point of view. And I should add that Mr. uh Mr. Green could have applied for a stay. He could have gone to court and say, hey. Stop this work, Judge. He didn't do that. So now that he now he's saying that we should have voluntarily stopped it. Again, not a point that has any any merit to it. Um. Think about this just for a minute, just bear with me for just a a a few more minutes. Let's assume we had come to you. Right at the time we got the IWC, we were we we were we were able to predict. That the Superior Court was going to declare the waiver provisions. The waiver provision illegal and we came to you and we said, hey, ZBA. We think the court is going to declare one of your zoning regulations illegal. Please grant us a variance based on the fact that we think. That that regulation is invalid. You would never entertain that. You would never say, oh, yeah, we'll grant you a variance, even though the zoning regulations as they're currently formulated allow you to get a waiver. So this this argument for Mr. Green is again absurd. We didn't have a hardship until the um, the court ruled that the zoning regulation was invalid. So, um. With regard to, you know, him, Mr. Green again brings in irrelevant information about the fact that. Uh, Mr. Solly, who represents a lot of people, a lot of developers in town. Did say to the uh Planning and Zoning Commission, hey. Your waiver provision has now been declared illegal, invalid, you have to change it. This idea that you can't bring fill in, remember your zoning regulations don't. Don't even allow people who want to bring in fill to bring it into their property without a waiver. You have a regulations, you can't bring fill to the property. How did you get around that originally? By that waiver provision. Now you can't bring fill to the property, so. Um, you know, again, there were some issues with these zoning regulations. Um, but look, there's no guarantee. That the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to pass or enact text changes. That will allow the exact implementation of the IWC remediation order. So they may never agree to allow somebody to uh excavate within five feet of a property line. Let alone twenty five or fifty feet. So the the idea that the text change is going to solve all these problems is again. High speculation and may never happen. And if it never happens, what happens? We're back to you asking for a variance. Because the IWC has approved this plan and wants it implemented. So the text change is by not by any stretch of the imagination necessarily going to solve this problem. And the problem is right now under your, under what we now know is the state of the of of the situation. And the state of the situation is that that waiver provision was declared invalid. The only way to implement this. Remediation plan is through the variances. I stand by that comment. I also stand by the comment about what I said to you about what the judge said to us during oral argument. I didn't say that the judge said you should apply for a a a variance. I said that at one point he suggested that a solution. Would be to obtain a variance from ZVA. I have my uh, I have my remarks right here. Um, bear with me one more minute, Mr. Wemp, please. Uh, with regard to the engineering for this project, the town engineer vetted the excavation and fill permit. He made comments on the excavation and fill permit application. There were changes made to the excavation and fill permit application. He was the one who helped establish the seven hundred and forty thousand dollar bond. So the town engineer has already reviewed both these applications and signed off on them. Otherwise, they would not have been approved by the IWC and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh. We're not seeking, we're not seeking a favor here. We're not seeking, you know, some equitable argument here. I've outlined for you the three bases under which we establish a hardship. And I stand by those three claims. If anyone wants me to review them, I will. Uh, other than that, I know Kevin Sully may want to address some of the factual contentions. And again, I know, uh, I really appreciate your indulgence. Obviously, this. This is a unique uh situation and it and but I think the law uh of variances. Clearly applies here and authorizes you to grant the variances requested. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Um. Do we, is there anything else from uh Mr. Solly or we?
I'll just go really quick. I actually think Steve did an excellent job of kind of summarizing the points. He actually hit most of the points that I made just. Real quick for, again, clarification, because I'm an engineer, it bothers me when things are misstated for the record. Um, we didn't import hundreds of thousands of yards of material when the approvals were granted. We simply completed the first phase, which was. Placing the material in the stockpiles that were onsite into the appropriate places, which is what we did. Um, the Superior Court deemed the wetlands approval was good and was valid. That's why they upheld that wetlands approval. So we have no reason to go back to wetlands for reapproval. We have to now address the issues in the planning and zoning regulations. Which were deemed illegal as Attorney Finn has indicated. Um, there were questions about whether or not the proposed activity will bring the site into. Greater compliance from what the previous conditions were and as an engineer, as the designer. I can attest that and I can testify that the existing conditions and the former conditions were far less compliant with the zoning regulations. Than what we are proposing. And again, our activity was in accordance with the zoning regulations because the zoning regulations. Had a waiver provision. It was just the act of the court that deemed that those provisions were not. Uh, legal and the only way to address those would come to the the zoning board of appeals. Um, he mentioned that the property line could be adjusted or moved. And the property line was adjusted. It was adjusted. It was adjusted because the wetlands gave us a condition of approval. That wanted the line adjusted into the position that it's been established. Um. He talked about, you know, there are other alternatives that wouldn't require waivers. That's simply not true. Because the activity that needs to take place, for example, to establish access to the town municipal detention basin. Needs to happen within twenty five feet and fifty feet of the street line. There is no way to do that without seeking relief for these conditions. And um additionally, during the the public hearing process between wetlands and planning and zoning. The opposition's uh representatives and consultants. Did testify and offer an alternative. To restore the watershed because there was at least an acknowledgement that the restoration of the watershed was a was a positive thing. But even their alternative would still require relief for these conditions. It would still require grading. Across within twenty five feet and fifty feet of property line. So there there the it's factually untrue. That there are opportunities to do this without requiring these waivers and in our opinion, at least in in based on the the current configuration and. What needs to take place in order to achieve these these goals of of restoring the site and and um. Bringing the site into greater conformance than it was previously, so. Um, I think and with that, we appreciate your consideration.
I I appreciate your clarification, Mr. Solly, and with that, we will close the public hearing on this matter. Uh, so uh, we are left to. Deliberate and discuss whether uh we should be moving forward with these various proposals. I have. Several comments I'd like to make, but I think it would be if if we can, it would be more appropriate to just to get a motion on the table for discussion purposes and then anybody can. Provide any comment uh they wish to have, so is there anybody is willing to make a motion at this point?
Uh, this is Ben. I have a question. Are we proposing? All four at once, or do we have to do each one separately?
Uh, I think we can take them collectively. Uh, I think they are close closely enough related that uh, I don't want to be in a position. I don't think it would be who of us to. Uh, take them individually, so it would be my thinking to take them all uh in their entirety. If if you all feel differently, I'm I'm. Welcome, but I I just think before we have substantive discussion, it would be appropriate to have a motion of some sort on the table. And by making a motion, you're not committed to support it or uh one way or the other, but we just need a motion so we can have discussion.
I uh, I motioned to approve all four variances. Um. You know, this this matter has come up a few times and. Seems like there's positive, um. There's positive results happening and it's moving towards more of a. You know, it's moving to a usable. Uh, piece of property that I think the town. And everyone would benefit from.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Mayne. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Ms. McPhail. You have any comments uh on that motion uh before uh?
Um, just that it it seems to uh rectify some of the problems that are existing or were existing and it seems to remedy some of the nonconformance.
Uh, Jim went for the record, I I I agree with that. Uh, I'm prepared to support this motion. Uh, this is an incredibly unique uh circumstance in which we have a. A a giant mess that uh all agencies of the town are looking to uh remedy. It's been. Supported by, I think, the relevant agencies here inland wetlands and TPZ. There's some technical aspects to this that require intervention potentially to move it forward. Uh, I think it's in the town's best interest that this matter be resolved uh as expeditiously as possible. Uh, there is no doubt that it's not going to end here. There's going to be further litigation down the line, but but. Uh, I I agree that um. The remediation is in the best interest of the environment. I I agree from what I've heard and what I've. Delved from these plans that an approval will result in a uh reduce. Excuse me, a reduction in the nonconformities here. So on that basis, uh, I'm I support it. Um, I also believe uh and agree that they the this applicant cannot comply with that notice of violation without. The benefit of these variances, and I think it's in the best in interest of both the environment and. The town uh to have that happen, so so I'm also in a position uh to support this variance request. Sarah, Ron, do you have any comments before we vote or are you good to vote? Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, um, Jimmy basically took many of the words out of my mouth. Um, fundamentally, the P and Z. And wetlands had looked at the plan and said, this is how we do wish to proceed. Uh, and move to proceed in that direction. Uh, one of our charges is to be sure that actions we take are consistent with the intent of planning and zoning. Uh, and I think they pretty much indicated their intent when they went in the direction of. Employing the variance, I'm sorry, the waivers. Uh. End of my comments.
I I I agree and it was well stated. Go ahead, Sarah.
Just comment just for the record, um, I think that all of our members here have already said, stated what um I would have stated as well. Um, I. There's a big a bigger concern here.
There's a bigger concern here that the notice of violation be corrected and that the impacts on the inland wetlands be addressed. It sounds as though the past is, is done, and all we can do is, is look forward at a reasonable approval. This approval was was looked at in the sense of a waiver by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I, I agree that it, it is a reasonable way of addressing the violations that are on the site and being able to move forward. And, and I sort of hinted at this before, where our, our charge here is looking at the variance. And I have not really heard a strong argument against why the variance wouldn't be granted to the normal, against the normal requirements that would normally have been followed. So given that, I, I'm also in agreement and ready to approve this.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote then? Having heard the motion again is to approve all of the listed variances, all those in favor of the motion, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I see five votes, this matter is approved five to zero. Thank you all, I know this is complicated, but I appreciate everybody's time and attention. Mr. Schultz, is there any other business that we need to discuss before we adjourn the meeting?
No, Mr. Chairman, everything has been addressed, and you are in order to adjourn.
Thank you very much, thank you all for your time, we stand adjourned, thank you.